Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectments Meeting for September 17th, 2015. First item on the agenda, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? Department head, committee chair, updates, Jennifer.
I'm actually gonna go a little out of sequence tonight because I've been promised that if I bumped somebody up, he would be short. So, Mr. Winchell, if you wanna take the podium, your timer begins now.
I appreciate it. I'm just gonna give a quick update on the salt-sand shed. We started last Thursday. We cut subgrade. We dug out over 300 feet of the walls. They're setting footings now, rebar. We're meeting tomorrow at quarter after eight with the electrician on the service electrical. Let's see how we're gonna do that. And we came in on a couple of issues with the ground down there. We hit some unvergin ground. The soil engineer was on-site during the whole process. He inspected all of it for us. When we came into that issue with the unvergin ground, we overdug it. He had us put some of our stone that we processed on the pit down there, and some geo and some other stone on it. So, he okayed all that. It's been all rolled. So, tentatively, they should be pouring footings, we're hoping, by Tuesday.
Can you tell them we want a written report on that after what happened with the last one? We want his okay on that in case something does happen.
Kenny Paul's gonna have all that after every inspection, I believe. So, we did get a report on our sieve test from our gravel. We have one pile that didn't pass. It was too many fines in it. So, we're gonna have to process up some other stuff that will pass to complete the project. But, we're in a... Right now, TPD, Steve from TPD is in touch with SW Coal to make sure that the materials we're using, we don't wanna have to use all the processed material we have and just waste a bunch of money. We're trying to use some of the native material. So, right now, they're in discussion right now, see what we're allowed to use for some of the backfill scene. We're doing it a little different than what the plan showed. So, on the uphill side towards the road, we're backfilling that wall four feet instead of leaving it down to a foot in grade. So, instead of using all process to do that, you know, it'd cost us an arm and a leg. So, they're in a process right now of trying to take care of that. Other than that, everything's going pretty well. Other than that, one spot that we hit, we're meeting with the electrician tomorrow. We got an outhouse down there and all that. Kenny had come down, he's checked it out. But, like I said, everything's going good so far and hopefully continues. We're supposed to have walls within 14 days.
Okay. Now, the electrician is being hired by TPD?
Yes. What we're doing is, I talked to Steve from TPD and I asked him what we're doing for the service. He said something about doing an overhead service. I didn't remember doing that. So, I don't want an overhead service. We're only gonna be roughly 15 feet off the building with the telephone pole that we've got. So, it's... We already had it on the ground. And I asked him to go back, look at his estimate and this and that, to make sure that we are going on the ground. And what we're gonna try to do is try to do the service outside, so it's not gonna be exposed to the salt and everything, and have it put on one of those backers. I'd like to look and see... I'm gonna call CMP and see if we own the pole. If we own the pole, we can mount all that stuff right on that pole, and I think that'd be the best thing to do. But, if not, we can do whatever on the side. But, the electrician's gonna come down tomorrow and go over everything with us to make sure this is what we want. So, Scott, I'm gonna call... I just got the phone call right before I got here, so I'm gonna contact Scott, make sure he can make it. And we'll give you an update on that, see how, you know, if there's any changes. But, I don't believe there'll be any cost. One thing we did do, I had Line Pro come down and pin the hole for us when we dug it, to make sure when they got there... TPD's responsible for pinning the footing. So, I had Line Pro come down and pin the hole to make sure it was big enough for Katie, that's who's doing our concrete down there, to make sure. And we were pretty good, you know? So, there will be a small fee for that, but...
It's a huge foundation.
It was tough to square it up when you're running almost 200 feet between the lines that they gave us and the wind blowing and this and that. So, that's why we had Line Pro come down. Because we... You know, you're talking, if you're a foot out here, you're gonna be five feet out on the other side, you know, roughly. So, it worked out well. So, far, everything's working out pretty good.
How many... How many feet of unvergin ground did you run into?
We ran into a section that was roughly about 40 feet long, about five feet deep. Pulled out some stumps. We got lucky up on the entrance part when you come in. Just as we were coming to the corner of the building, we started coming in some unvergin on the surface. And we end up pulling out a stump that was probably, it was well over two feet diameter, that was upside down that they had placed there. It was roughly a foot below the hot top.
Wow.
And they grabbled over it. So, we pulled that out. We didn't go any further. You know, we went where we had to go. But, we got pretty lucky. We haven't dug the gable end wall because they had needed access inside the building. So, they do all their setting up. They set a jib and everything up inside, and they got the crane and they're doing everything. So, but, we did return the corners, and we find that the virgin ground is coming back up. So, we think we're gonna be all right. So, but, like I said, the soil engineer has gone through everything. He was there during the whole process, so we should be in really good shape.
Can I just ask a quick question? Ask him a quick question. The survey that was done, and you mentioned a few other reports, anything in writing that you might be able to leave with the town hall so that in, you know, 50, 60 years...
Yeah, I've got... Line Pro's supposed to be sending us an actual survey. They're gonna give us marks and stuff of the survey line that they did, but I also asked them later on down the road, I didn't feel that we needed to do it this moment.
No, just, yeah, anything in writing, you get it, just so we can copy and keep a file going.
I asked them, seeing he'd already gotten that line, that later on, when they slow down, and we got the money to do it, to have them hit our other two corners, to make sure that later on down the road we're fine.
They're not doing anything now.
And it'll be an official survey done. And right now, he says, with the information that he's got right now, it'll take very little time because everything's plugged in. So, I'll make sure that comes.
Any comments? Thanks.
Alright, thanks.
Have a good night.
You too, Dave.
Alright. Fire rescue merger update. We'll start with Ed because I know that you guys have had a couple of meetings, and I know that you and Jennifer and Peter and Jennifer Seer met last night. You wanna kinda update us on where that's at before we pull her up?
Sure. She can come up to and weigh in on it. We did have a meeting last night. There was myself, Jen Iscado, Chief Pete Smith, Bill Catanze, and Chief Jen Seer from the ambulance was there last night. What that was is basically to kinda gather together what information the ambulance association has and how they run. I guess is probably the best way to put it. And, you know, we found out some information there and whatnot, and just trying to figure out which way, what our best foot forward is from that point, which probably is going to be just to put together a list of how it's gonna play out, I guess is the best way to put it. Both in the transfer of the assets and whatnot, and how it will move forward from that point. So, that's...
I think that's accurate. I think it was a good beginning to kinda get everybody moving forward and looking to what needs to get done to make this happen as best for the Acton Fire Rescue and for the town. And we kinda, when we talked, we delegated some tasks for each of us to get done, to move in the right direction. I offered support to Chief Seer to get some things and also gather some information, and I think it went well.
So, did you guys schedule another meeting, or how did you leave it?
We didn't schedule another meeting, I don't believe.
No, we did.
No.
Well, next Tuesday we've been meeting for consolidation.
For the consolidation, for the...
But, the four, right, the five of you didn't.
Right, but not for what we had done last night, so... Yeah, I think what we need to do with what we did last night is, I think it's a good time now to lay out a new set of guidelines and operating criteria, I guess you will, paper flow and things of that nature. So, we can kinda take from what they have now and then use that and start fresh and just come up with a new blueprint, basically, which isn't difficult to do. I mean, it's just, you're just gonna have to lay it out and say, okay, when you get a call, this, 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 and this will happen paperwork-wise. Not talking operational, but talking, you know, how it...
Procedures.
Yeah, procedures, and what you do with the paperwork afterwards, and what channel it will flow through so the billing will happen and all that, so...
Would it be better if you and Jen just meet together and actually work with the papers rather than in a meeting?
I think kinda having some other people there is good because it does help get different inputs and different thought processes and ideas. But, I definitely... Jen and I have a meeting scheduled Monday...
Oh, good, okay, that's what I was wondering about.
...to start working together to figure out how to move forward. So, I think the combination of things will work good.
Okay.
Okay, we finally have the MPI number.
Yay!
I have a meeting scheduled with Tammy from Monday, Tammy Higgins from Billing, to do the main care application. Hopefully, we're gonna have that done, and I'll be in touch with you Monday to let you know what's happening with that, to get the check. I've talked to a woman from Kennebunk that has already gone through this transition, and she's kind of the liaison there.
Karen.
Karen. And she offered, actually, I'm gonna go meet with her, and she's going to kind of, I wanna say, shadow me as to best practices, where to look, give me links of information so that the town has that information. And she also went through it, not only with Kennebunk, but with Goodwin's Mills. And she was a wealth of knowledge, very good along the same lines that we were talking about procedure-wise, how things should go, what the balancing is of it and stuff. And so, it was very, it was very nice for her to open up that...
Offer, yeah.
The offer of that. So, I think that that's gonna be a good, very good resource for you.
So, license is in, the MPI number's in, next is Medicare, you're moving right along.
Yep.
The license is in, but it's in limbo, is that correct?
So, we can't actually physically have the license in hand until the Acton Fire Rescue can run.
Okay, yep.
And then, that will happen. So, they leave, we... The Acton Fire Rescue legally has a license, but because we're still running under the association, they can't activate that yet.
Good.
It's just a phone call.
Yeah, this is a matter of flipping the switch on that one, so...
And just keep in mind, as I said to David, anything, any paperwork or anything that you gather, if you make sure you keep copies for everything.
Oh, yes.
So, when this is all said and done, and, you know, 20, 30, 40 years, we've got a, the whole process, you know?
I'm keeping copies of everything.
And then, we'll eventually file them away.
Thank you for all your work. You're doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
Working with the government's not fun. What's next?
Next, flags downstairs have been completed. I just wanted you to know that they got delivered, put together by myself, and now I just need one of you fine gentlemen to lug them downstairs, but they're all ready to go, so...
So, I'm in the hallway, look good.
Good. That's what you wanted, right?
Yes.
Good. The next, the veteran graves survey. So, we've talked about this pretty much since town meeting about, you know, we know by state statute, we're required to maintain them. Conservation are either busy or haven't had time to get back to us. We need to figure out some way of gathering the information for getting a list that the town will maintain for these cemeteries. Because, you know, we may have a list of all the cemeteries, we don't necessarily have, you know, exactly who's in them and where. We've got a lot of people that say that they have a cemetery, you know, a veteran buried in their backyard. We need to come up with some ways that we can start gathering information and advertising so that hopefully the people and property owners will reach out to us. Do you have any ideas on where we might start with that?
Well, if you advertise it on the TV station, and you mentioned that you were gonna have something where people could sign up when they come in to do registrations and all that.
Yeah, we thought we'd do some signs in there.
Yeah.
Maybe word of mouth. Any other, you know, committee members, any other committees that might be able to maybe help us? Like I said, conservation knows we're looking for it. I've got a note to try to reach out to Lorraine. I don't know if the owners of all of these cemeteries, if they would have lists of who's in there and if they're veterans or not. Does anybody know? Dick, do you have any idea?
I believe that Hannah Phillips and Wes Hamm have the information.
They don't have it all. They only have a few. We've already checked with them.
Yeah, we have, we have reached out to the conserv...
Believe me, they have a lot more than what you...
Than what they're telling us?
I've been trying to get it so that we could... I want, my goal was to have it available, you know, for the towns or if somebody comes in. And...
Well, we wanna be able to maintain them, and we haven't been able to because we don't know how many cemeteries have veterans' graves in them. So, we can't get a bid on maintaining them until we know how many cemeteries and where they are.
Yeah.
I've spoken to the conservation chair a few times, and they have indicated to me that they have lists and that they will get them to us.
Oh, okay.
But, that's been several months, and we haven't seen that yet. But, they did say that they were incomplete as well, so we need to find a way to... Because at this point, we're not gonna be able to maintain them this year. I mean, let's face it, we're gonna be shoveling snow before you know it. But, by the time we start our next bid process, you know...
I highly recommend that you review the tapes for the last couple conservation committee meetings.
Okay. Alright.
And you need to turn around and have somebody attend those meetings so that we get it firsthand.
Yeah, we're actually gonna talk about that a little later, later on in the agenda, as far as those meetings. Malsen Valley Little League sent an email. Cindy Labby, who is the president, she was unaware that we ran on a fiscal year rather than a calendar year. So, she sent an email that she asked me to share with you. Hello, all. Please let me start by apologizing for not updating you before now. With a 12-year-old son of my own, we were on the road every night trying to keep him involved, keep him involved in sports as long as we can. As you all may know, our baseball season came together rather quickly. Fortunately, we were able to put together a great year and get the ball rolling. Our equipment was very old and did not meet Little League standards. We invested a little over $2,000 to make our players safe. With the help of a few volunteers, we're able to have our fields ready, as always more volunteers are needed. Has successful opening and closing ceremonies. Insurance and charters were paid in the amount of $1,262.56. Uniforms were in very poor shape. They needed to purchase out 50 new pairs. The current board that they have, Cindy Labby, Jason Lamontaine, Jana Robichaud, who's one of our Acton, and Barbara Morissette would like to know that the money that Acton and Chapel contribute was put to great use, and without your support, there would not be a baseball program. So, she's looking to thank you and also hopefully reach out to anybody that might be interested in donating and/or helping.
Well, that money came out of the rec department, didn't it? Didn't they give them the money based on how many kids were playing on the team? They didn't ask us for a donation.
Right.
Okay.
And they usually do it separate. So, I think that, like I said, when she realized that it wasn't budget time right now in Acton, that changed a little bit.
Hmm.
The next one, CAI update. I just wanted to share with you something that I've been working on with Cardiographics. As you know, we have the maps online, and we have so many different things that that website offers. It's often spoken about in this area as one of the best assessing websites around.
We're in the main town, isn't it because of it?
Oh, that's right. You had your picture taken in the main town, isn't it?
That's right.
We have a lot of different layers. So, if you go on and you're looking at a couple of properties or you pull a property, you can click down on layers, and whether it's Resource Protection layer, or just zoning in general, or maybe the rivers and streams you wanna see. We spent the last couple of months working with Cardiographics as part of the charge, current charge. They updated us with all of our tree growth. Tree growth was one of the things that we hadn't put on there. So, we were able to scan all of the tree growths. They get dumped into this particular file that updates every night from my computer. And anyways, they created a layer for tree growth, so now you can actually go on there. And this was something that code enforcement had requested because when he's issuing permits and measuring and doing his thing, he can't tell if a property's in tree growth on the maps online. So, now, if you take the time to look at it, there's an actual layer that you can click on and see, you know, everywhere in the town that's in tree growth. It's kinda interesting and another, yet another factor that they did for us. One of our next two projects, and I just kinda wanted to get some input from the board on, two different things that we're looking at trying next. And we do run as their trial town with a lot of things because we're so far advanced. Both of these things would be administrative only, so it's not something that the public would be able to access from their point. But, for the town and for administrative, it might be very helpful. One of two things, we're looking at either all the dogs in town. We can actually create a particular type of file in Trio, so if a dog is registered, there's a layer that can be created, and we'll dump it on there, so you'll see all of the locations. So, animal control or someone could use that. The other one, which I think we're leaning more towards first, is an age-based. So, I can, but it only comes from my, it would come from voter registration, date of birth. I can tell it to, you know, run me a list of anybody that's 80 to 180. And what it'll do is plot all of those houses. So, Deputy Shaw, it's a good source or a tool for him in the winter to be able to go around and check on those particular people, especially if we know if they're on private roads and fire and rescue can't get down there, so...
Or they're living alone.
Yep. So, he's, we're working on a couple of different things, but certainly if there's anything that anybody might like to see on that site, we're open to suggestions.
That's great. I saw the library email. This year, all that's gonna be done is that wall, unless we have extra money left, because that's all we have enough money for, is that wall of the library and this wall of the town hall.
Yep. So, she wanted to thank you for the repairs on the ramps, so that was, that was good. They appreciated that, patrons too. Patron asked me about the exterior. Okay, so, we're gonna, we can reply telling her that this, the inner side will be done, right?
Right. And we're gonna continue to work on it each year, but we decided not to try and go and get all the money at one time. So, each year, we've done a couple of walls, and that's the two walls we're doing this year.
Yep, the inside pieces.
Right.
And she knows, because we've had a conversation about, the gentleman that did the laterno is coming out to do a quote that we might possibly put on next year's town meeting to make that level and replace that ramp that we did over here.
And match it to the new ramp out here.
So, the last one, the wasps in the building are creating a very large nest way up high. She's looking for somebody that can take care of that.
Just let them do it.
Huh?
Just let them do it. They're not gonna bother anybody.
Just leave them?
Yeah, wouldn't mess with them now. In a couple of months, they'll be frozen, then you can knock it down. You wanna open, you wanna knock it down and have them flying all around the front door of the library?
No, she's looking for someone to take care of them. I can tell that...
The wasps or the...
It says wasps.
Paper wasps. They're making a big paper nest. It's up on the peak.
You know, you can buy these sprays that go 30, 40 feet.
Yeah, I think I have one in my office, actually.
No, I think you can...
But, then they won't be all down flying around the door, the ones that aren't in the nest when you kill them?
Well, yeah, if you get rid of them.
Ed, what do you think?
I'll see if you can try. Put me down.
Okay.
Put you down?
You can have that.
Alright, so Bill's gonna take a look at that.
When they build them on my barn, I wait till it's cold, and then I get rid of them.
I will pass along both recommendations, and we'll see what she wants to do.
If I commit all lumps, you'll know that it didn't work.
Well, don't come into my office. Go see Peter across the street. I can't help you. Secretarial lines. Last week, at the end of the meeting, I asked you for permission to do a couple of different things. One was to look at the secretarial lines and make some recommendations to possibly get on this October 20th special town meeting in regards to secretarial lines and everyone's pay. You've addressed the code enforcement. I think that he's, you know, where he should be based on other towns. And the thought was, you know, we've had this job posting open now for almost two months. We've interviewed two people, and we've got two resumes. At this point, it's still open. We're still taking applications. But, one of the things I talked about last week was the fact that there are so many towns hiring, and we're, we just can't compete with them. Hourly, it's similar, but there are just no benefits in Acton. So, we talked about, you know, trying to figure out how we could raise that $12 or $13 an hour to maybe 15 or 16 to make up for the lack of benefits, to try to encourage people to stay. Because honestly, I mean, you can't blame current staff for, you know, looking at Sanford when they're offering $3 or $4 or more an hour and all those benefits. So, with that said, because it's so late in the year, and we really need to be able to pull more information together about the treasurer position, my position, and kind of which direction we're going in, we're gonna respectfully put it off until the June town meeting. I think I have enough leeway inside the budget that we currently have of all those secretarial lines to give merit increases to the assistants in-house if we decide to do that. Additionally, the board authorized, you know, five to eight hours of extra secretarial support. So, you know, whether that's Michelle or myself on a Sunday, or, you know, I think that's a better idea and that stays within the budget than doing this, you know, than adding it on to the special town meeting. Because we really wanna be able to have the time to prepare and show the town, you know, exactly where all the information is coming from, so...
Okay, going forward, I recommend that we get the policy committee back on and ask them if they'd be willing to do job descriptions for the office staff, and probably the transfer station staff too, because we don't have any job descriptions there, before they all fly south for the winter. They did a great job with the policy book. If they're interested in doing it, I would suggest that we have them come back and do all the job descriptions.
Yeah, maybe a good idea. Maybe they can do a wage, little wage study too, if that's helpful.
Well, Main Municipal has a 2014, 2015 wage schedule. I mean, it's, you hate to, you know, you may need to call some towns to figure out exactly what their benefits are, but the numbers are very clearly in front of you. So, we hate to see somebody recreate the wheel.
Maybe that's something they could look at, though. They could look at that wage study, you know, kind of an outside neutral party.
Yep.
And come back with a recommendation, see if that's something that would work for you.
Um...
Might take a little load off you trying to do it all and...
Well, I was gonna delegate it.
There you go.
I'll speak to the policy committee. You know, the last couple of times I've spoken to them, they like to stay within their realm, so... And I know that a couple of them are leaving, but I'll have an update for you next week. I'll reach out to some of them.
Yeah, even if they can't do it till they come back, as long as we have it done before we put in the budget for raises and everything, if we have job descriptions to go to explain why, you know, the raises are needed.
And I think that the, I mean, the job descriptions are something, and certainly not to counter what you're saying, but, I mean, I can see the policy committee, to get a job description, we'll use, you know, the town clerk, just the town clerk for example. I mean, we're gonna get them access to Main Municipal, they're gonna poll the town clerks, to poll the town clerks, but they don't know anything about that job. So it's just going to be a matter of me really, you know, writing them or assisting them all the way through it. The same with the treasurer. I mean, the-
Right. But they're going to have to make it unique to Acton and that's where they can question you, but then they'll do all the writing and everything like they did with all the policies. They had to do that with the policies too. They had to come and talk to you about, you know, why are we changing this and is this valid anymore? So, yeah, they'll definitely have to have contact with you, but I think they're going to take the bulk of the work away from you.
Let's see what they have to say.
If they're willing to do it.
Okay. Um, gym cleaning. So our cleaning lady has spoken to me the last couple of weeks, um, about the gym. The, um, I guess I just want to outline what her duties really are at the fitness center in regards to cleaning. Um, you know, she may be, she is doing a little more than I would expect her to do over there. I think that, you know, the people that use the gym take some responsibility. Um, you know, there are signs that say change your shoes, no street shoes. And of course, she's, you know, picking up gallons, according to her, gallons or buckets of sand. Um, you know, it's broken the vacuum. It's, it's, um, you know, it's causing a lot of work over there. The equipment, she says, is extremely dirty. She's brought me some rags that I did not bring in here, but she'd like you to look at in that empty office, um, from wiping the equipment down this week. It's, I mean, it's literally black, you know? So I personally think that, you know, if she cleaned the restroom-
I thought that, uh, all it was when we started was clean the restroom and vacuum.
No, well, that's what, well, I'm not, and I'm not sure-
She always has been washing all the equipment?
Yes. So, I mean, you guys are okay with her just doing the, the restroom? I mean, we need to purchase another vacuum if she's going to vacuum over there. There's, the one that we have, the belt broke and there's just too much sand for a regular cheap, you know, $50 Eureka at Walmart. I mean, you're going to need some sort of shop vac or something that's used to pulling up sand.
Yeah, shop vacs aren't that expensive. Okay.
Let's take that out of one of the gym lines and- Uh, next thing that I put on the, my list was, so meetings, no show, no cancel. Um, this happened twice this week. Um, we schedule meetings. You know, the committees come to me, whether it's the beginning of the month, and they say, we're going to have a meeting on this day. We're going to do this. So I contact Cable. Cable then contacts their people. Their people, you know, interrupt their lives. They come out to, to film and the meeting's canceled. The, um, meeting that was supposed to be held on Tuesday, which was Conservation, um, my understanding is that one or two people showed up. They couldn't get a quorum, so they all just, they left. That's what I got third hand. Um, the meeting that was scheduled for yesterday, which was a rec meeting, it just didn't happen. So we have to come up with some other, some other policy because they're not notifying anybody. I mean, if, if, you know, I mean, things happen and we know that. Certainly within, you know, even with a half hour, an hour's notice, I can cancel a meeting and, and contact Cable and, you know, stop everybody in their shoes. But some of the committees, it's getting to be habit to schedule and then not show and not cancel. Um, we are paying the Cable people that come out because that's only fair. Um, but we, you know, we need to come up with some other way to, to address these committees so it doesn't keep happening.
Who are the liaisons to those committees?
Bill. And Bill short of a both of them.
So you're coming to them and nobody else shows up?
That's happened for a long, long time. At least as far as records concerned.
So who calls you to tell you that they have the meetings? The chairs from those committees?
Conservation in the beginning said to me, you know, and this was just a few months ago when we were talking about the veterans, schedule us. And we scheduled six or eight months in advance. The third is the third Tuesday or the third Tuesday of the month. So while he or she is standing there, we go through and we schedule on the calendar. Rec, same thing. Schedule us the third Wednesday of every month, right? We go through and schedule. So. We used to send the, I used to send an email out to all of you saying, you know, tell me of any meetings, but we were getting them so sporadically that, so we tried to do it six or eight months in advance. But, so I don't know, maybe just a friendly reminder, Bill, to both of the chairs, or maybe everybody touch spaces with their committees and, uh, and, and kind of not to change real quick, but I heard somebody say there was a meeting next Tuesday, fire and rescue. Right?
There is. That will be, need to be filmed.
Okay. So we have to find a way to communicate because if, if it wouldn't have been nonchalantly mentioned here, it wouldn't be filmed. So-
That's probably my fault. I should have let you know.
When's the, uh, when is the meeting? I'm sorry, next Tuesday?
Tuesday at 6:30.
Tuesday at 6:30 at a fire station. Um, I'm going to call on Warren Finance too. Do you know when your next meeting is, Mr. Williams?
I have it down here sometime next week.
Yeah, and we don't, we need to get that scheduled. Um, so as many of, aren't showing up, we're not getting the right, we're not, you know, getting enough information on the, the other ones, the more important ones, if you will. Um, and Larissa might have given me this day, but I didn't see it on the calendar.
It's the 28th of September.
What time?
28th of September, eight, uh, 6:30.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll make sure those two are on there and maybe we can just remind everybody that-
Okay.
It's got to be filmed. All right, that's it for me. Unless you have anything for me?
You have abatements under-
Yep, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to do that. We have two abatements that we're going to present to you. One of them is for personal property for a company called PNC Equipment. Um, you're going to see an abatement for 13, 14, and 15. They are $25, $26, and $27. In 2012, you abated this property because it's personal property and the, the business is no longer located in Acton. Um, after that, it inadvertently did not get deleted. So it continued to-
Didn't come off a Trio.
No, right. No, the assessor didn't go in and delete the account. So, um, it wasn't until we sent them a nice small claims notice, trying to catch up on taxes. They said, oh, no, wait, we don't have that. So those are abatements for that one.
Three different ones.
The other abatement is for, um, map 131 lot 54. Uh, our records indicated that she had eight acres of land when in fact the deed shows 1.7. So you'll see a land value drop on that one. Any of them that have been corrections on the assessor's part, they're not filing for an abatement per se. We're presenting them as abatements from, you know, from his corrections. So that's why you're not seeing the actual form. Were your ears ringing? I just mentioned your name. Couldn't remember if you gave me the next meeting day, the 28th, but Mr. Williams had it. So we're good.
Uh, tax abatement. PNC Equipment Finance LLC, Cincinnati, Ohio. Dear PNC Equipment Finance LLC, the town of Acton has received the 2013 assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted abatement on Acton map lot 247 PP. The reason for the abatement are the personal property is no longer located in Acton and was removed prior to 4/1/2012. Dear PAC Equipment Finance LLC, the town of Acton has reviewed the 2014 assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted abatement on Acton map lot 247 PP. The reasons for the abatement are the personal property is no longer located in Acton and was removed prior to 4/1/2012. PNC, dear PNC Equipment Finance LLC, the town of Acton has reviewed the 2015 assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted abatement on Acton map lot 247 PP. The reason for the abatement are the personal property is no longer located in Acton and was removed prior to 4/1/2012. The revised valuation tax and the original valuation and tax are displayed in the table below. We, the Acton Board of Assessors, have approved a tax abatement for 2,279 valuation, 2632 in tax dollars, 2530 in tax dollars, and 2530 in tax dollars on personal property. Please contact our assessments agent, John E. O'Donnell and Associates, if you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter at 207-926-4044. A motion.
I move that we approve the, uh, abatement requests.
Seconded. All in favor? Dear Darlene Clement, the town of Acton has reviewed the 2015 assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted an abatement on Acton map lot 131-054. The reason for the abatement are the land value was adjusted to reflect the fact that the parcel is 1.7 acres and not eight acres. The revised valuation and tax and the original valuation and tax are displaced, displayed in the table below. Dick, could you close that door? Thank you. We, the Board of Assessors, have approved a tax abatement for zero in valuation and zero in tax dollars on personal property. Please contact our assessors agent, Johnny O'Donnell and Associates, if you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter at 207-926-4044. A motion?
I move that we approve these abatements.
Seconded.
All in favor? All right. Catering letter?
This was, um, slid underneath my door when I came in. Hand it to you as presented. It's regarding a, um, liquor request-
Oh.
For a catering service, which are dealt with differently because they're licensed to the state. You'll have to take a look at it.
Yeah. Well, we went through this when somebody wanted to cater something down at the Acton Fairgrounds, right? Dear Chairman Krizak, Selectman Shields, and Selectman Walsh, I regret I am unable to join you this evening at the Board of Selectmen meeting as I have a prior obligation. Please find enclosed my current state of Maine qualified caterer off-premise liquor license as well as a binder for my food and liquor liability policy for your review. I submit these documents in anticipation of an open house to be held at the Blueberry Hill Farm on October 1st, 2015. The state of Maine requires a minimum of two signatures indicating town approval of a forementioned event. Upon finding all documentation in order, would you please sign the application to be filled by the state of Maine? We looked into this before and we turned the other people down, um, because we actually have to give them a liquor license for Acton in order for them to operate in Acton. Is that what we found out last time?
Um, I don't recall. I haven't, hadn't any time to look into it. So I'd have to, I certainly can next couple of days, but I'm not comfortable.
Because somebody tried to do it at the Acton Fairgrounds. If, did they get approved for a, um, conditional use permit to have the events up there?
Yes, the, um, yes.
Okay.
But this is not, oh, this is for Blueberry.
Blueberry Hill. So then, yeah, so if that's what, if they want a liquor license, then they should be applying for it because this is not a liquor license in Acton.
Well, he already has a catering license with liquor approved from the state.
Right, but it's not an Acton license. So he can't serve that, because we went through this with the people that wanted to have the beer garden at the Acton Fair and we turned them down because they had to apply for a license and it was only for a week. So, and if, they're not going to use the same one all the time. So-
No, they are.
Can we look into, they're going to use the same caterer all the time?
Yeah, he's going to, said he was going to be a fixed caterer there.
Okay. I, I suggest we have Brad look at it before we go any further with it.
Yeah, Brad, uh, find out from the state what the rules and regs are.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I'm sure I can figure it out.
Yep.
So we'll table that until next week?
Yes, please. All right. Anything else?
Uh, not for me.
Anybody else have any other business? No? All right. There's public, public hearing on October 1st, 2015. Um, special town meeting on October 20th, 2015, at the Acton School. There are going to be flu shots here at town hall on September 25th, 2015, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And there's a rabies clinic, October 25th, 2015, 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the Kennybunk Animal Shelter. Any idea what that costs?
No idea.
Okay. I know it's a lot cheaper than having to go to the vet.
I did notice today, um, that Walgreens is now doing rabies shots on Sundays from-
Every Sunday?
Every Sunday from nine, it's nine to 11, or 11 to 12. I caught the sign briefly and we called them to, to verify.
People or animals?
Both, Chip. You'd probably qualify. We could do both. Animals, I presume. It says animal sign. Animal, it says animal shots.
Oh, all right.
There was no definition though of animal.
There could be every other kind of shot there.
And we still have time to come tonight. We have three public hearings starting at 6 o'clock. We have the transfer station. Um, we have the fire department. And at 7 o'clock, we have, um, the zoning change for the Little Red Schoolhouse. So if anybody's interested in coming to those public hearings, there's still time to get here tonight. Okay. You guys got anything?
Nope.
What was that? Motion.
$20 for Kennybunk. Thank you, Larissa. They sent me an email. They sent me an email saying more information to come.
The rabies clinic in, on October 25th at Kennybunk is $20. Motion?
I'm not sure what the motion should be.
Do adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
We were going to start putting a time in our motions, remember, to adjourn?
Oh, time is, uh, 5-
4:06, 5:45.
46?
Thank you.
Yeah, 5:46 is right on my phone.